Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting. It's all nice to see you all here. Ms. Chisenski, can you call the roll, please?
Sure.
Mr. Grippo?
Here.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Harrigan?
Here.
Mr. Gustinberg?
Here.
Mr. Perigini?
Here.
Ms. Sobel?
Here.
Ms. Vady?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call. Thank you. Okay, can you join me in the pledge and...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask Marlene Solano, Ms. Solano, to come up and introduce tonight's program. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, especially on this kind of dreary, drizzly evening. We're happy to have you all. This is always one of our most favorite nights, where we get to showcase the good things that are happening in Cheshire public schools. And we're going to kick it off tonight with a presentation about our continuum of special education services at the elementary level. And to do that, it's my privilege to introduce Robin Ann Carey, who is the supervisor of special education at the elementary level. So, thank you to Robin and her team for putting this presentation together tonight.
We have two teams here that we brought to you today. So, I'm really excited to welcome here to our showcase. I'm really excited to share with you information about two of our specialized programs that we have in the district. The first program being our therapeutic program at Doolittle called Bridges, and the other one, our intensive ed program that's here at Highland. So, I'll introduce our teams, and then they'll begin and share out information on their programs. So, I have Stephanie Lotovico here, who's a special education teacher for Bridges; Heather Pa, our school psychologist for Bridges; and Nicole Caputo, special ed teacher for Bridges. And then our intensive ed team here, we have Shelby Clark, special ed teacher; Christina Sherwood, special ed teacher; Lauren Block, special ed teacher. And our final person here is Jen Prophet. Jen holds many hats because she works in both of these programs. She is our board-certified behavior analyst. And her job is to analyze and look at the behavior of our students and to make recommendations. So, she helps with our students in Bridges, our students in the intensive ed program, as well as working in all of the elementary schools, helping with behavioral strategies and behavioral plans. So, she's stretched very thin across the district, but she does a great job. So, thank you. What we'll start with first is... Okay, so just to give you an overview of our special education department at the elementary level. So, I put up here, just going into our program and looking at our special ed numbers as they stand recently. These numbers can fluctuate on a daily basis. It depends on whether students are being identified and determined eligible for special ed services, or they may be even exited. Maybe they've met all their goals and objectives, and they've mastered all of their skills, and those deficits and those gaps have closed, and they are no longer eligible for special ed services. Across the elementary schools and throughout the district, many of our students fall under these classifications you see over on the right-hand side. Some of the trends that we're seeing over the past few years is, I think most of you are already aware, that our autism numbers are rising. And that's true across the state. It's true across the country. Cheshire is no different. So, we do see a rise in our students being identified under the classification of autism. And the other one, we're seeing a trend of also growing, is our students that are identified under other health impair. And oftentimes, those students are identified under that classification due to anxiety, due to social-emotional needs, depression, and anxiety. And as you know, that is why it's one of our big focuses here in Cheshire. Okay. This diagram gives us a little idea of our continuum of services. So, when we say there's a continuum of services, we are looking at a couple of different things. One of them is setting. So, you can see over to the left-hand side is our most restrictive setting, or what we call our self-contained classrooms. So, in that setting, students spend the majority of their day in a self-contained classroom because they require a small student-to-teacher ratio. They require some intensive supports, and they require specialized instruction that really is geared towards meeting their needs, not just behaviorally, academically, and all across all different areas. So, it's a small setting, very intense instruction. This can also include students that are placed on homebound. We have some students in district that are medically fragile and are unable to come into tenth school. And so, they are on a homebound program, which is one of our most intense programs. And then, the other thing is if we're unable to meet their needs in the district, then a more restrictive setting would be for students who are outplaced in special education schools. In those settings, they don't have access to peers, and so, it's considered our most restrictive setting. As you move across the continuum, you have a variety of different services that can take place, and going all the way over to the least restrictive. By least restrictive, our setting we're talking about now is the general ed classroom. In that setting, students that are identified with disabilities are provided supports in their general education classroom. And they are fully included and participate. And then, with accommodations, modifications, and specialized instruction that is provided within the general ed setting, they are able to be successful. So, all between these two areas, you have what we call resource room support. Resource room support is specialized instruction that's provided in a classroom, a small setting classroom. Students come in and out. There's a nice flow of students coming in and out of the classroom, where they're able to come in for the services and the direct explicit instruction they need. And then, they also can go out and spend time in the general education classroom. So, in that, it can vary as to how much time a student spends in the resource room, how little time they spend, or if they spend more time in there versus how much they spend in the general ed setting. It's all based on individual need and what type of instruction they need. So, you can see that it's all based on what those students need and what the deficits are that need to be addressed, and where they are most successful. The services that we provide include special education direct services, speech and language, OT, PT. Did I forget anything? Oh, counseling, obviously, counseling, and social skills. Those are all of our services across our program. Okay. So, now, I'm going to turn it over to Nicole, who's going to talk to us about the Bridges program.
Good evening, everyone. So, as Robin had mentioned, Bridges is housed at Doolittle School. We support students with social-emotional and behavioral skills deficits. Each of their programs individualized to meet their specific areas of strength and concern. Our goal for our students is to help to develop the coping skills necessary to independently self-regulate in order to be successful. Who does Bridges serve? So, students in the Bridges program are from first to sixth grade. They qualify for special education typically under the disability categories, as Robin mentioned earlier, of other health impairment due to high anxiety or emotional disturbance. Students in our program have average to above-average cognitive ability. They do not have a diagnosis of autism. Some of these students also may have a history of trauma, and they come from all over the district. So, even though our program is housed at Doolittle, we have students from every elementary school in town.
So, we work from the premise in Bridges of children do well if they can. And if they can't, we have to figure out why. So, we follow a problem-solving process where we identify what the problem is, analyze the information and the data that we have about when dysregulation is happening, where it's happening, what might the causes be. We develop a plan and implement the plan. And ideally, when all of this happens, the student is able to then regulate and then is able to achieve academically as well. So, really, our students are often dysregulated, or they have difficulty regulating on their own. And what happens with these students is that when the dysregulation occurs, our brain responds. And so, we've heard of sight, flight, and freeze. And so, that's what's happening for these students. So, when they're dysregulated, they can't listen, they can't comprehend, and they have difficulty coping. So, we need to figure out how to regulate them, how to teach them how to regulate themselves. And so, that's our main focus in our program. When their brains are in that alarm state, it can be for a variety of reasons. And sometimes, those reasons don't seem to make sense to us as the adults. So, you can have a really academically gifted student freezing about a math test because that's the thing that is setting them off. They feel like they're going to fail if they don't get 100, if they're not the first person done, if they can't do it. And they go into freeze mode. And we might not agree with their perception of how they're going to do. We know that they know the material. We know that they can be successful. But their perception is their reality. And when they freeze like that, we need to figure it out. So, when they're frozen, when they're anxious, when they're dysregulated, it's not the time to have a conversation and process with them. So, these are lots of tools that we use to help with our students. We need to help them to regulate, to relate, and to reason. So, the first step in regulating is to help them focus on soothing. What works for them? Is it being in a quiet room? Is it using some breathing techniques? Is it using some yoga? Is it using a glitter calming jar? For some students, it is talking and using the mood meter. It is talking about the size of the problem. But a lot of that talking comes second to really stopping and being able to regulate their body. So, then, once they do that, they rely on the relationships they have, being able to focus on the connection with the adults that they're most comfortable with, and us modeling for them. "I can see that you're really angry right now. I know this is really hard for you." Validating their feelings. And then, the final step then is to reason. Once they're calm and regulated, we can talk about, you know, "I know that you're really upset, but that behavior can't happen. And so, what are we going to do the next time? What are some alternatives that we can do?" We have to reassure them that we care about them. "I really care about you, and this is why we need to work on this together. This is why I'm going to partner with you and help you with this." This is where really working on the size of the problem, you know, for some of these kids, it's really hard for them to assess the size of the problem. So, everything is the same size, you know? If five is the highest on the scale, you know, getting a 96 and getting in a car accident on the way to school might both be fives on their scale. So, helping them to really realistically look at, "What's the size of the problem? And what do I need to do to help myself?" I included this picture. This is not our students or our dog, but we have had in the past a therapy dog come into school. And for some of our kids, that's been really helpful. And, you know, when I'm working with the students, I do a lot of work with their thoughts and how their thoughts, their feelings, and their behavior are all intertwined. Again, until they're regulated, until they have that relationship, it's really difficult to do that reasoning. So, that's why our program is so nice, because they have these three adults that are with them all the time, that they have those relationships with, and they can work that through and then develop their own bag of tricks, what works for you.
So, the Bridges program started in the 2015-2016 school year. At the end of the 2016 school year, it ended up serving six students in a self-contained classroom. So, if we fast forward to our school year now, the 2019-2020 school year, we have 10 students with varying degrees of support. So, some students still have that self-contained model. Some students have partial inclusion in the general education, with some academic instruction in the Bridges room. Some are fully mainstreamed with support from the instructional assistants. And then, some are fully mainstreamed with just behavioral check-ins from our staff. So, of the six students who were with us from the inception of the program, one of the six was actually exited from Bridges altogether. One moved on to Dodd and is now in the Bridges program at the secondary level. Two are partially included. They spend 80% of their day fully mainstreamed with direct instruction from Bridges for that 20% of their day. And then, two others are fully mainstreamed with only the support of an instructional assistant. And of those two, one of them is actually participating in AGP this year, which is really awesome and exciting for us, and him.
Thank you. All right. So, we'll now share about the intensive ed program.
Hi. The intensive ed program is housed here at Highland. And this is a self-contained special ed classroom. They provide individualized instruction for a variety of cognitive, functional, social-emotional, and communication deficits. The staff here have very specific training and expertise in these areas, specifically with autism spectrum disorders, the approaches to applied behavior analysis, and then also discreet trial instruction. And we're going to talk a little bit about what all those things are. But the ultimate goal for this program is for these students to become independent learners and participating members of the community with little to no adult support. Most of them come in pretty dependent upon adults. And by the time they really want to be able to work that out and build that independence for them.
Okay, so what is the intensive ed program? It's a program that services kids with significant cognitive needs, multiple disabilities, or autism spectrum disorders. Most of the students, when they come to us, have limited to no speech or echolalic speech. So, it's speech that they've learned from somebody but isn't always functional. They have impaired functional skills, major cognitive delays, and quite often, maladaptive behavior, whether they're self-injurious, injurious to other students or family members or staff.
So, the makeup of the program, there's three classrooms here at Highland. There's a special ed teacher in each class. And then, each student has a one-to-one instructional assistant who's trained in ABA and DTI instruction. And then, one of me, for all of them. And then, the makeup right now is 19 students from all the elementary schools in the district. So, as with Bridges, they don't have to have their home school at Highland in order to come here. They can go to any one of the elementary schools to be eligible for the program. The services that they get within the program, they get the ABA services. Oh, by me. Again, they have that discreet trial instruction, which we'll talk more about. They also get those services that Robin was talking about, the speech and language therapy, the occupational therapy, the physical therapy, social skills instruction, and counseling services.
Okay, so what is ABA? We keep throwing this acronym around, and it's really the focus of our program. So, ABA is applied behavioral analysis. It's a practice where we look at current behavior. And behavior is really anything we do. It doesn't have to be negative or positive. It's really just acting. And looking at the frequency, what happened before, what happened after, and really interpreting that to get a better understanding of what the child is cognitively doing. We really like to break down steps of different tasks that we want them to learn into very basic skills and teach those skills. And by doing that, we're able to do that through discreet trials, which we will talk more of later. And we progress monitor using a curriculum database and data collection system known as RETHINK. And in order to provide this service to students, all of our staff members have to have a really good understanding of ABA and discreet trial instruction. Without that, that methodology really doesn't function well. And we can't guarantee that these students are getting the training that they need and require without that training of the staff. And PMT training.
So, discreet trial instruction. It's a research-based technique from ABA. And pretty much, and you could talk for days about this, but what it is, is breaking those tasks down into really small units in order to teach those or shape those new skills. So, you start at the smallest component of a skill, and then, you teach a little bit at a time to shape that behavior up to what the ultimate end skill is. So, the skill is broken down to the smallest possible components, and then, kind of take the puzzle apart. And then, we're able to teach one piece at a time until they can do the whole puzzle as it is, whatever skill that is, using a very discreet trials, that repetition, using those prompts, being able to say the same thing to give the antecedent and expect the same behavior from them. And these students that benefit from ABA really learn in that very rote, repetition sort of based instruction. So, that's really what DTI is all about. We separate those antecedents, like I just said. So, you're giving some sort of prompt, "Touch this, do this, say this, what color is this?" And then, you're looking for the behavior. So, then, to say, "Red, touch this," whatever you're asking them to do. And then, the consequences, again, the praise. It might just be "good job," or "a thumbs up," or any number of things, depending on the student. And then, again, the skills are taught in repetition order to give them enough opportunities to learn and practice. And it's a lot of memorization for these guys because the cognition level is really low. And so, the best way they learn is by doing it over and over and over and then building memory of it.
They don't always come to us with that much language.
Yeah. So, there's a lot in that video. They were working on a lot of different objectives in one session. And it's very fast-paced, and it has to be very fast like that because if you pause, if you turn, if you take a moment, you've lost them. You've got to keep that behavioral momentum going. So, that's why it is very fast like that. So, she was putting the cards on the ground, and she was asking him to name, she was giving him the prompt, "What do you drink with, what do you eat with?" She's basically teaching him the function of things, like what are these things used for? Before that, I'm sure she taught him to label. So, this is a fork, this is a spoon, this is a car. And then, once he's mastered that, they move on. "All right, now you need to know what those are used for. It's great that you know the names of them if you have to know what they're used for." So, she was working on the function of those things. She also used the cards, but she also used drinking actual things. So, he had his cup, she had her water bottle. So, taking that to the next level to work on that generalization piece. So, you can name it in a picture, but can you use the actual object to do something? And then, what she was handing him were little tokens. They were just little poker chip kind of things. And after he got the right response, he put the token on the token board, is what that was. And then, when he got up to five, so he was getting a token after every correct response, kind of delaying that reinforcement. And so, his ultimate reinforcer was the M and N or the Skittles, whatever those were. So, we had to get to five on his board, and then, he can get that big payoff. And at first, I thought the sound wasn't working, but she kind of puts her head down, and she's not talking. So, what she's doing is she's waiting for him to request because his board is full. He had all five tokens. She's waiting for him to say, "I have my five." So, what I'm thinking is she probably had to prompt that a lot in the past and say, "When you have five, you have to ask me and tell me you want your M and N." And now, they're trying to fade that out. So, she kind of did that intentionally, and it looked, what looked like ignoring. She was waiting for him to do it, and he did. And then, she had to take his hand and do that, but then, he was able to say it. So, there's a lot. And so, that is really, in a really short little nutshell, is what discreet trial instruction is and what it's used for, and what these ladies and IAs are doing with our kids all day.
So, DTIs use to teach lots of things. Our kiddos don't come with us with the basic understanding that a lot of incoming kindergarteners do have. So, we have to teach them motor imitation just for the sake of, at some point, we're going to teach them some skills that require them to move their body, and they need to understand how to follow a direction. We work on compliance training of being able to sit in a chair, or "Follow me," or "Walk with me," "Hold my hand." Receptive language. A lot of our kids have major deficits in understanding receptive language. So, when they don't have expressive language, receptive language is a skill we can build on. So, being able to put down picture cards and say, "Give me the car, give me the color red," and working on those skills through visual learning. Expressive language, what color? Being able to do, give us some expressive language back. And we do that in two different ways. With children who really don't have the ability to speak back to us, we use communication devices for them to express back to us. Or, if they do have a voice, we work on them repeating us and feeding those prompts away. Vocational practice. Even at the elementary level, we start with very basic functional home skills so that we can work towards the hope of a career. So, we work on "put in," and "sort," and "wash," and "give me," and things like that. Response to yes-no questions. A lot of our kiddos do have a good understanding of "no." Yes is tougher. So, we work on a lot of yeses. Labeling is very similar to expressive language. And then, we work on identification of feature, function, class, sizes. And then, we do work on interverbals so they can communicate more with their peers in that conversation.
So, with that, we also work on adaptive functional daily living skills, so kind of what they're able to do here So kind of what they're able to do here, and also carry it over to home. Work on toilet training with hand washing, being able to dress themselves, brushing their teeth and their hair, washing their hands and their face, um, doing their arrival and their dismissal routines by themselves. Um, we do a lot on desensitizing, desensitizing training with specific phobias. So a lot of our kids are afraid of what seems to us very irrational things. Um, going to the doctors, dentist, you can tolerate the vacuum on and use the vacuum himself. Um, simple cooking task, so a lot of our older kids will make their own lunches. Their parents send in, you know, um, bread and peanut butter and jelly, and they make their own sandwiches. They also work with the OT, um, and do OT groups on cooking. They go, the older class goes to Big Y and shops. They have a list, and they shop for things, and then they come back. They come back and make, um, whatever they shop for. They make a recipe with the OT and with the classroom teacher and the instructional assistants. Um, household and school-based chores, going with clothes, cleaning up after meals. They talk a lot with parents, what do you want your kids to be able to do at home? Um, we have a little guy that sorts shirts and belts and socks, and we have drawers for him, um, because they should be, they can do that. And so we teach it here, they can carry it over to the home, and they can have chores that they can do at home. Um, and also that group engagement and that participation. So being with the group, um, in the generalized setting, and introducing it in the specialized setting, and on this much smaller, um, individualized basis, and being able to carry that over, so they can access their peers and be able to engage with them at their level.
Okay, so some of the additional supports that we're very happy to have is, okay. Um, RETHINK was an online curriculum that we actually were able to get about four years ago now. Um, it's really a curriculum and lesson plan and material bank that we're able to go in, once we determine what the student's strengths and weaknesses are, and be able to pull those lessons up, get the materials, and then be able to have our IAs in the moment, put the data in, so that we can go back, pull those graphs, and share them with the parents. We also use those graphs when we meet as a group to really look at, are they really tracking in the direction that we want them to? What adjustments do we need to make in the moment? And RETHINK allows us to pull that very quickly and see that.
Um, like we were saying before, so these are some, some communication systems that our kids use. Um, quite a bit of them have little to no language, um, but they have things to say, and they do want to communicate, so giving them the tools to be able to do that. Um, and we have a variety of different things based on what kids respond to and what they are successful with. So we have, the first one is a Proloquo communication app, and that's typically on an iPad. They use it. Um, and what they do is they just have to press, they press a button, and it says it out loud. So it's pretty much the person pressed, I feel happy, I want to go outside, and those are all individual buttons. And the speech pathologist works very closely with the classroom teachers to really work on one picture at a time. It'll take, it'll take them a long time to be able to put in a full sentence, but, um, they start with usually, I want, or they put pictures of toys on there that they want, and they're able to press those and get what they want immediately to learn that relationship between, if I press this, I get what I need, or I get what I want. Um, the PEX, this Picture Exchange Communication System, is very similar. It's just they're actual pictures. Um, this has been around forever. And it's just, pretty much, this has turned into the, the technology part of it. But I still love that. Um, it's the old-fashioned pictures, and you hand it to me, and you get it, and it's portable, and you carry it everywhere, and everybody knows what all the symbols are. So whether they go in the community, whether they go in the library, whether they're, wherever they're going, they can use that as a way to communicate with anybody in the community.
And then some of the other things we do too is every, every moment of the day where you're taking data on our shoulder. Um, there isn't really, they don't breathe left without us writing it down in some way, shape, or form. Um, so we really progress monitor not only on academics, but social skills and life skills and behavior. Um, so these are just some examples of some behavior sheets that we use outside of RETHINK. Um, and one is a task analysis of washing your hands. Um, so it really shows, for our little guys, we really need to break down what we kind of take advantage of. We know how to go in and wash our hands very quickly, but for them, they, you really need to show them every step of the way. And a typical task analysis for hand washing is 12 different steps. So showing that and being able to take data on what prompts did they need, and when did they need them, and how do we fade those away? And how do we get them to be more independent? And what is the breakdown of that step? And being able to look at all of that. And then we also have other types of behavior tracking systems to kind of look at, how are they behaving when they go out into specials? Or when they go to recess and lunch with their peers? What kind of behaviors are we seeing? Are they talking to the peer next to them? Or are they crying on the floor because it's too loud? Um, and we take data on all of that and really analyze all of that to make sure that we're making decisions to help them be as successful as possible.
So that, that is our two programs, our intensive ed program and our Bridges program. Thank you, ladies. Very, very fortunate to have these two programs in our district and to have these talented ladies that work extremely hard every day with our most intense students. Um, we're very fortunate that we're able to keep our students in our community where they still have access to peers. And as, as their skills improve, and as they, um, as they, uh, become more aware of their surroundings and, uh, and able to deal and cope with their surroundings, then they're able to participate more and more with their age-appropriate peers and learn from them and see them as good role models. So I want to thank everybody for coming. It was really exciting for us to share these programs with you. And, um, if anybody has any questions, we'd be more than willing to answer any questions.
Um, what sort of programs do we have to support parents? Obviously, just three trials, I think, that only work as well as their consistency in other.
Right. So that's a really good question. Um, so these two programs, as well as all of our special education teachers, um, really do a lot of communication with parents. Communication through emails, newsletters, um, phone calls. And, uh, we also do parent forum nights. So, uh, we just had a, for, uh, a meeting just last month. The, um, intensive ed program invited all their, their 19 parents in to come in, and they shared different strategies, and they talk about different things that they're working on in the classroom. Um, the communication that occurs between them to help them understand what is specifically being taught to their children also takes place through communication logs, um, that go home on a daily basis. As you heard the ladies talk about their RETHINK program, that enables us to be able to print out, um, the immediate data as to how their child is doing. And we share those at our PPT meetings, our planning and placement meetings, as well as team meetings, where we call the whole team in to be able to share and communicate and collaborate. Same thing with the Bridges program. They're in daily communication with parents. And any strategies that they have found that have worked well are, you know, automatically shared with parents and with clinicians. They also have, um, they also consult with any outside clinicians that work with these students, um, in the community, outside in their homes as, in the private setting, and all of that is collaborated together. So parents are really well, well-oriented.
So what is a method by which a student is admitted into the Bridges program?
That program, um, so what we have, we, we have students that have behavioral needs. Obviously, we have some criteria that we look at. So we want to look at, what is the basis of their behavior? Is it anxiety ridden, is it trauma? Uh, we look at, um, what is their cognitive levels? Because we look to see if they're average to above average. We want to, we want to separate out and not include kids with autism in a program like this, because their needs are different. And, um, so we, we look at that information, and then we look at, are we able to meet the needs of the student in their home school? And if we have gotten to our most restrictive setting that we can in their home school, and they need additional support, such as more access to the, to the counselor, um, the BCBA looking at the behavior and looking at ways of improving that, and, um, in the, um, more intense coping strategies and supports, then, um, we would look at referring them to the Bridges program. Typically, the process I've used with the team is, uh, we talk to the team. We have a team go over, do some observations, communicate, and, uh, with the classroom, with the teacher, the specialized teacher that's currently working with the students. And then, um, it's a PPT decision. So basically, when we go to PPT and we talk about the revisions that need to be made for that student, um, and we develop their plan, we look, can we support it in their home school? If we can't, and the student requires more intense services, then we look at the Bridges program. Any other questions?
Go right ahead.
What, what percentage of students do we have with special needs at this point?
That's a good question. So, um, years ago, we were always under the state average. We were around not eight, nine percent. Um, that has creeped up in Cheshire as well as across the state. And I think we're, uh, are we at 12?
Still below the state average.
We're still below the state average.
12.5.
That's what I thought, 12%.
Has the percentage is going up, has the staffing going up, comparable?
Good question. Um, the, um, we did, um, add the third classroom for the intensive ed, because we did see that growth in the autism program. So we did add that. And as we get students in, um, those students require additional instructional, they need an instructional assistant to support them throughout the day so that we can carry those skills and support those skills throughout the day. Um, and so they're also individualized that we do end up adding instructional systems to provide that support. Um, we started off with, um, when we first introduced the Bridges program, it was one classroom of six students. Um, and we then expanded to two classrooms, because we knew that we really wanted to separate primary grades from the upper grade levels. And we wanted to keep our numbers low, too. Right now, there's 10 students, and so we're able to keep it at a really low student-to-teacher ratio. So, um, you know, we've been fortunate enough to be able to do that. I think that what's been difficult is, you know, as you're all aware, and we've been talking about for the past year or so, is the increase in students with social, emotional needs. And so our staffing, we were very fortunate last year to add additional school psychologists. Um, and that's been really helpful this year. And, um, and, you know, our hope is to be able to expand our BCBA services, because, um, as I explained, Jen works in these two intense programs, as well as providing consult and direct service across the elementary. She's the only BCBA at the elementary level? There is one at the secondary level as well.
I would elaborate on that, too, just a little bit to indicate that, the, if you look at a straight ratio of special ed staff to students, the ratio of students to staff is lower today. But a lot of that is because, would, would indicate more staffing. But a lot of that is because we're adding intensive program, uh, which is better for our students to keep them in-house. Uh, the quality, as you've seen tonight, is incredible. But it's also cheaper than transporting students out of town to go to other programs. It's better for the student, and it's more cost-effective.
And they have more access to their, to appropriate role models and the general education peers. You saw, out of those six students that started that program, are, many of them are now spending a majority of their day in the generalized classroom. Had we outplaced them, that transition to come back into the school district would have been far more difficult. It wouldn't have been a smooth transition. It would have been introducing that child probably in very short increments, like half-days, and then increasing. It depends on the child's needs. But, um, it, it, you know, having them in their home, in their district, in the community, it is, makes that transition far easier, um, for the students. So they're not so far removed. Any other questions?
Just want to commend you and the staff. I think these are wonderful programs, and, uh, it's great to see children who can make some real headway.
We, we are very, very fortunate. I've been here a little over 11 years, and I'll tell you, I get phone calls from realtors, parents looking to move to Cheshire. I get referrals from Yale telling parents to move their child to Cheshire. So we are very, very proud of our programming here and of the hard work of these ladies and all, all of the staffing that we have in our program. They have such a fantastic work ethic, and they are here for the right reasons. And that's for the kids. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I just, I'm sure these ladies would say the same thing, but it, you know, I'm really impressed. And, you know, these are really talented people that are, are working for us. And I can honestly say, since I've never actually been to one of these classrooms, I really had to know.
Come, come visit.
I didn't take you down.
My door's so open.
My office is located here, and I would bring you down.
Okay, all right. But I did get quite a, you know, like, my eyes are really open to the kind of work that we're able to do with these children. And it's, you know, it's phenomenal, phenomenal. So, um, I just congratulate all of you for the work you do.
Thank you. I'm glad we had the opportunity to share it with you.
As always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Something else? Is that, is that the whole group? Oh, okay. Well, thanks, everyone. Thank you, Robyn, and everybody that presented tonight. Um, I guess I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Anybody? Ms. Solo, second? All in favor? All right. Thank you so much. Thanks very much, you guys.